Statshots. You can get your own copy of this fact-filled survey by simply going online to www.ladss.org, which is Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services. Click on LA County Seniors Count, and the full report will appear. Or if you like, you can have a copy mailed to you by calling area code 213-738-2065. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life, and also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and ideas for future programs. So please give us a call, the number's there on your screen, area 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, and we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks so much for watching, we'll see you next time.
I'll be home in a minute.
Well, the party's just getting started, so hurry home, honey.
I'll tell ya.
Yes, good job!
Slow down, your family is waiting for you. Watch the road.
Hi, I'm Dee, welcome to the Pacific Palace, and you're lucky, Channel 35. It's our day in our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 24th, 2011. If I can ask everybody to come to order in chambers, and please take their seats. Thank you for council members who are here. Council members Cardenas, Weezar, Caress, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, and Zion are here. We have excuses on the desk for Ms. Hahn, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Smith, as well as Mr. Weston and Mr. Alarcon today, so we just have a bare quorum of ten members. So everybody is here for the duration of the meeting, colleagues. Want to welcome all of the folks who've joined us from the public here in council chambers, as well as those viewing us in our two remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro, which are open during council meetings, for your convenience, if you live closer to those places and want to save a little money on gas and save some time in traffic. We also can take testimony in those remote locations in Van Nuys or in San Pedro. We're also available three other ways, on the internet, through our city's homepage at lacity.org, where you can catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. Also, we are available through our city's cable system, on Channel 35, throughout the city's cable system, live and then rebroadcast as well in the evenings. And finally, you can call in on your telephone at 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY, and you can listen into the council meetings, as well as any of the committee meetings that we have, too. Want to thank everybody who is here, and with that, Madam Quirk, if you please, call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezar, Caress, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zion, Garcia, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Zion seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Communitary resolutions.
All right, Mr. Caress moves, and Mr. Krikorian seconds, without objection, they will be approved as well. Next order of business, please?
Today is Tuesday, Mr. President, we try to the flag salute.
Absolutely, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our salute to the flag, and Mr. Labange, if you would like to lead us?
Thank you. Please place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. If we can run through today's agenda, and Mr. Labange, you had an introduction you wanted to make first?
Introduction, if I could.
Go ahead, and then we'll run through the agenda, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I believe one of the greatest of many gifts that America has received was the Statue of Liberty. Yesterday, while in my district, I ran into a man on a motorcycle, he told me he was from France. Mr. Zion, I thanked him for the greatest gift, that being the Statue of Liberty. Then to find out his program, Mr. Garcia, he's on an electric scooter. He took 75 days to leave New York City, go through the Holland Tunnel, come all the way across the United States. Please welcome Benjamin Verone, who we just stood right here, very special guest, and he made it all the way on an electric bike, all the way across the country, so very special.
Don't win you.
Thank you.
Good to have you here in Los Angeles, and welcome to the City of Angels. And thank you, Mr. Labange. Only you would have found him, so good work, good work. We will run through the agenda now, if there's any items that council members wish to call special, if we could direct your attention to those. Any items that have not yet had a public hearing in committee, if there's cards in the public, we'll have public hearings on those. If they've already had a public hearing in committee, it requires council to reopen that public hearing for that to be held as well. So first items, please.
Items 1 through 13, our Department of Building and Safety lanes knows for public hearing, the department reports that items 1, 9, and 13 may be received and filed as much as the lanes have been paid. Also, there's requests to continue item 4 to May 27th.
All right, without objection, we'll continue item 4 till the 27th. Will move 1 be received and filed, and also number 9 and 13, are we going to take those up as well? Okay, to be received and filed. Let's hold on, 14 and 15 require motions. Mr. Zion, 15 is in your district, do you want to move approval by the recommend on item number 15?
Number 15, please.
Okay, and do we have any staff from council district 10, or should we hold that? Why we hold 14? And if we can open the roll?
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's also a card on item number 3.
On 3. We'll call 3 special for card from the public as well, and we also have, I think, a card on 1, is that correct? Yes, we have 1, even though it's going to be received and filed, we do have a card. Yes, Mr. Zion?
On number 15, that is to approve that with all the conditions that have been established.
You mean number 15?
Yes, with all the conditions.
With the conditions, yes. Thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll, then. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved, next items, please?
Items 16 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held, there's requests to continue item 18 to May 25th.
Okay, I'll call 16 special, if there's no objection to continuing 18 to the 25th, we'll continue that. Anybody wishing to call 17 special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 17, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is approved, next items, please?
Items 19 through 27 are carrying, have been held, 10 votes required for consideration. There's requests to continue item 19 to May 25th, and item 20 to June 7th.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and continue those two. 25 we'll call special for me and Mr. Zion. And any other specials? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's a card on item 22 and 25.
Okay, 25 we've called special, but we'll also add 22 to the list as well, for our comment card on 22. That leaves us the balance, if we can take up those items, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. That will take us to our general public comment now, and I'd like to ask Donna Perman to come up as our first speaker, live in council chambers. Welcome, Donna, and after that will be Peter Fogler. Good morning.
Okay, anyway, I'm a federal employee, and I pay into my health care at 20%, I want people to know. It might go up, but I want a retiree health care. I feel it's important that every city employee has a right to retiree health care, actually every public employee. 4% is a fair amount to ask. Health care is going sky-high, so we have to be able to get that retiree health care. And unions have voted no, there was a lot that voted yes, remember. Isn't there a way to come up with a solution? It must be done in kindness, not retaliation. There's a lot more than this thing, that's why the people voted no. So I want the public to be understanding until this thing can be worked out. I still feel the DWP shouldn't be exempt. They need to sacrifice, contribute. Our councilman mayor sacrificed, shouldn't DWP? Our mayor spoke yesterday, we are in the biggest deficit ever. One minute spoke and said 10 million for a bike path to nowhere, that could be utilized better. Why do we feel we should so much be allowed to the CRA? We're also in triple deficit, if so many unnecessary CRA projects are done. So many are unemployed, CRA hasn't fixed that, it's a sham, it's a developer's dream. Our city council loves it. Our city services are suffering, fire department will have less fire trucks, more out, has less fire trucks, more paramedics. They aren't, trees aren't being streamed, streets are being paved, MTA members, buses are being cut, it takes longer to commute, but Grand Avenue goes on. Our city is in deficit because our city council loves to spend money, it doesn't have, on pet projects. Our city is broke, whose fault is that? Look at the horseshoe, look at the public! Who allows it? Who allowed the number 22 for the CRA projects to have cart launch wherever they want? The city council only does what's asked for, remember that.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Peter Fogler is our next speaker, after Mr. Fogler will be Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm a city employee, and my union 501 has voted no, 117 to 95 for the proposed contract. However, my family is concerned about the retirement medical health care for 501 members. We need to continue the negotiations to include retirement health care for our families. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you for your service as well. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, Elsverino, Northeast LA. Invitation to all, Loomis Day is coming up, June the 5th, on Sunday. We'd like to have everyone come out to Northeast LA to see both the Loomis House and Heritage Square, where the exhibitions will be open. However, there's one thing out there that won't be open, and that's the Southwest Museum, Loomis's heritage to the city of LA, the first museum in LA. What's happened to it? Well, Autry tried to do some things, and then last Friday, the Wrexham Park Department decided that they needed to have Autry do a new exhibition. What of those things from the Southwest Museum? So this is just the first step in a long, protracted, they have another three years to go, so it could take a little longer, or two years, sorry. And they are trying to take the Southwest Museum, Loomis's heritage, out of Northeast LA, because they don't like the neighborhood, and put it in Griffith Park. We're quite concerned about this, we're quite concerned that the commission approved the reconstruction of their exhibitions. By the way, this is one of the first permits that they've actually gotten the commission to approve, because although they have a lease with the city of Los Angeles, and they have an agreement with the old board of the Southwest Museum, they have not complied. This is the first time. We'd like to have a 245 exercised against the resolution by the Wrexham Park Commission regarding renovations in Autry National Center.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, after that will be Daniel Rowe Collins.
I need to speak to Mr. Eric Garcia and Miguel Santana. They're going in the negotiations, I think they're an overkill, I think it's too much on the contracts, you just, it's like you're trying to make them jump over a wall, like the police have to do it, and this is too much for them, they can't go climbing over a wall, trying to pass this retirement health care when you're throwing and deferring a raise the third time in a row. I mean, you ask them to roll on something, and you ask them to ratify it, okay, and you don't keep your agreement. You keep changing the thing, and so people are going to turn it down. And when you threaten them with follows, you're scaring people to vote for it. You're intimidating them, and you're putting a gun at their heads, and it's not fair to the workers of the city. And secondly, you don't even say anything about DWP in the second place, that they need to give up their raises, you don't defer their raises, you don't cut down, you don't make them pay into health care and to more pension. How come there's an inequality here, unfair labor practice, I call this. There should be a very big lawsuit here for the way you guys negotiate your contracts, they're out of line, way out of line, and they should be going in the middle of the road. And I talked to Mayor, and he says he's going to try and bring it back, but folks, you're not going to get anything out of these guys, now that they're hiring, as long as you keep putting hard on them, you're going to be hard on them, and sock it to them hard, you're not going to get anything. The only way you're going to do anything is to be fair with them, to be nice to them, and to be, how should I, be peacemakers, love people, love the people, okay? Love the workers, okay, and treat them with respect and dignity. That's what they're asking for, I'm asking for, in the name of humanity, okay? Have everybody guaranteed retirement health care, all city workers, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Daniel Rowe Collins is our next speaker, after that will be Richard Robinson. After that will be Richard Robinson.
Hello. Thank you. This is my first time at City Hall.
Welcome.
I've lived in Los Angeles for a year and a half, and I think there's a growing problem that's over forty thousand strong, and that's the homeless here. When I was growing up in New York, we had a problem on Forty-second Street, and that was back in the eighties, and we stopped panhandling, and we stopped a lot of things, and we cleaned up the streets. I think if, maybe if we brought up something like a dollar jobs or something for the homeless to do, so they're not panhandling, they're knocking on people's windows, and maybe we could, maybe get to the initial problem for each one, whether they don't want the money or they don't want the job, maybe they need some help. But we need to humanize the forty thousand strong that are plaguing our streets, so maybe we could think about a way to do that, maybe give them these dollar jobs, and maybe more tasks that they could maybe feel confident about themselves, and maybe be productive from street to society. So, thank you very much. Anybody who believes in that, please have all my information on the paper, maybe we can work together.
Great, thank you. And if there's an interesting project that might be of interest called Hollywood Forward, with the number four, Hollywood Forward, that's doing, trying to do that at least in one neighborhood here in the city, and check it out, it's done through the chamber as well.
I know money, you don't want to give these people money, maybe we could work for the Hollywood health care or something.
Absolutely, it's given health care, training, all the things I need.
So that they could get maybe rooming standards and stuff like that.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Richard Robinson is our next speaker. Joseph Dunn will follow Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good to see you.
Mr. President, Members, Richard Robinson. The veneer of civilization is skin deep. Sir, the lack of collegiality, congeniality in this chamber is historic. The lack of bipartisanship is silly. From the time I arrived here from the campus of the University of Michigan, where I was born and ran for seat on the campus in order to serve on the Ann Arbor City Council, I've seen racism, sexism, homophobia, et cetera. From that time when Sam Yordi denigrated Tom Bradley in an attempt to stop him, I've seen the basis of human nature for forty years. I've seen also, the most brilliant geniuses gift this city with dedication. Your Honor, I've seen compassion, honesty, and intelligence for forty years, save lives and provide opportunity for millions. Let me give an example. The life of a person I call Robin Hood, I saw greed and personal ambition destroy the private life of a man accused of sexual harassment, a charge he is innocent of, which costs you a million and a half dollars to, a man who, another who came to work with the powdered sugar of a doughnut, something that's silly, on his lapel being charged by a staff member with using heroin. I've seen our mayor in this chamber accused of being a heroin addict by a schizophrenic. You have to bring, you have to protect the city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Joseph Dunn is our next speaker. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm, my name is Joseph Dunn, and I'm a newly elected board member of the Southern California Transit Advocates, or CACADA for short, and we, for the first time, we're standing right behind the Bus Riders Union for, to, for you guys to get a backbone and vote for the Wilshire own bus only lanes that's been out there and all that. Rich Rex Gepfard from the MTA did a tiresome job trying to get this system going, and was based on the Curitiba and Brazil service. They have rider, all the buses on the, on the Curitiba Rapid Bus Service has their own riderway. Let's do it over here also in LA. And when it comes to Beverly Hills and Brentwood, have a backbone. Don't cave in to those people who don't use the service at all, you know? There are people, many millions of other people use it, and I urge that you guys get through Santa Monica and tell them to extend the plan to go to Wilshire Se, and all that. It's ridiculous to do, to be, I asked the city council, including Mr. You, Mr. Corret, yourself, do you like sitting in traffic in LA? Are you just in love with that and all that? Are you in love with that? Ms. Perry, are you in love with that? Mr. Reyes and all that? Then let's get the, let's do the right job and vote for the, for the bus only lane on Wilshire. Please do that for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. Now we'll close our general public comment. If we can go to the first item called special, well, actually before that, if we can reconsider item twenty-six for Mr. Wasson, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
We've had a request from his office, if we can continue fourteen and twenty-sixth until tomorrow, when he will return, we'll go ahead without objection and do that. First item called special is item one for a card from Michael Herrera. Would you like to come forward, Mr. Herrera? Okay, I think Mr. Herrera left. Let's go ahead and close the public comment on one. That was to move to receive and file, since it's already been paid. Let's go ahead without objection and receive and file number one. Next item called special is item three, and like to invite Thomas, can't quit, there's an N, but I can't read the rest of it, sir.
I apologize, I filled that out very quickly.
That's all right, no problem. What's your full name?
It's Thomas Nitti, N-I-T-T-I.
Thank you.
I represent Nicola Sare, the owner of the property, who's here in the audience today. Mr. Sare is being assessed for a fence that was put up at the order of the city. You've probably heard before that the administrative cost is excessive, the cost of the fence was excessive. It would be the first time that you've heard that, and I put that in a written submission to the council. I'd like to explain briefly why the council got a written submission today. Shortly after receiving the notice of this hearing from the city, I gave the city a California Public Records Act request for the file on this particular property. It took the building department nearly one month to provide that file. As you know, state law states that they are to provide that file within ten days unless they state an excuse. They stated no excuse and simply took nearly a month. I provided in my written submission a copy of their transmittal letter, which I just got a few days ago, saying that after a month, the file was now ready. Well, after a month, it was really too late to make a submission to the council ten days prior to this meeting, because I only recently got aspects of the file, so I submitted what I could. In my written request, I asked for a continuance of this hearing, and let me just specify what is unusual and different about this particular case. Mr. Sare filed an appeal of a notice of abatement back in two thousand and three. Attached to my submission is the written, date-stamped appeal in two thousand and three. The city did nothing with the appeal, waited five years, and then put a fence around his property, which was under construction. I have no idea why the city simply ignored his appeal, but they should have processed his appeal, and perhaps the fence would never have gone up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's in my council district. We'll hold that on the table and see if we can find some more information out for you. We'll hold that for now and not take a vote on that. I've been asked to reconsider number eight, because we had some cards that came in a little bit after. Let's go ahead and reopen the roll on number eight, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And we'll take public comment from B and D Darwish, if you'd like to come forward.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for reconsidering.
Sure.
And I purchased a property, and the owner burned the garage down, and I wasn't made aware of it. I wasn't mailed a notice. Apparently, the building and safety missed a number on the address, and I wasn't made aware of it. So, a handyman notified me, and I put fencing on the property, and then building and safety sent their subcontractor out and put a fence in front of my fence. So I'm asking that this thirteen hundred and ninety dollars be waived, because I did secure the property, and I was not given notice.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to speak as well, sir? You had a card in, okay. We'll hold this on the table. I know my staff spoke with you, and we're going to try to find out more information about it too, so we'll hold that and not take a vote on it right now. Okay? Thank you, appreciate it. All right, if we can get the next item called special, please.
Item sixteen called special by Councilman Eric Garcetti.
Oh, Mr. Zine, would you be kind enough to swap out with me?
Be happy to, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is item number sixteen, which has come through our ad hoc committee on economic recovery and reinvestment. These are RR funds, known as federal stimulus dollars, from the federal government on Energy Efficiency and Conservation Black Block Grant. Before, we had our council meeting in the Valley, some of you may have seen, because we had our committee meeting out there before, had both myself and Mr. Alacon had some concerns, and DWP stepped up and said we will spend out a hundred percent of that money. I think I saw, yeah, I see you out there. So I just want to make sure that we put a verbal motion in that gets us there, and we appreciate your work on that. So I move that the matter of the recommendations, number one and two A of the CDD report, and I'll give this to you, so don't worry, you don't have to write it all down, dated May third, two thousand and eleven, related to item sixteen on today's council agenda, be included with the recommendations contained in the ad hoc Economic Recovery and Reinvestment Committee report. And further to address issues raised in the committee meeting pertaining to this matter, I move that the Department of Water and Power be requested to submit the council's ad hoc Economic Recovery and Reinvestment Committee, a written commitment by DWP indicating that the department has met or will meet by the end of the grant lifecycle, the one hundred percent weatherization spending goal. Mr. Alacon was very interested in this as well, and so I talked to him just about ten minutes before the meeting. So we both want to make sure that that moves forward, and I think there's going to be a separate motion perhaps introduced today on some other RR funds on behalf of Mr. Alacon as well. So move that. And just for the general public, this is the time, these are dollars that we are spending to weatherize your homes. Comes from the federal government, it saves you money, it reduces your water and your power bills, and helps us get green jobs. The city, in some cases, the city will be doing, in other cases, some of our local community development corporations will be doing as well. So if you are interested in this program, what's the easiest place to go to? DWP? It's a combination of DWP and profits, but is there one website or one number that they can call? Okay, just if you go to ladwp.com, there are links, I've gone through there, that you can find out how to weatherize your own home. Call three one one, we'll make sure our three one one operators can make those referrals as well. But there are monies in all council districts, we're spending it across the board in the city, so no matter how big or how small your home is, we want to help you reduce your bills, help our economic recovery by keeping people working and putting them to work. So I ask for your support today with this amendment.
See no one on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, that passes. Next item, please.
Item twenty-two called special for cards.
Yes, you complain about public workers getting paid too much. Well, this is kind of an overkill for taxi, taxi drivers, so I don't know how the public can ride for this, because I'm sure you're going to give them something here out of the general fund. And I don't, it smells like a rat. I don't like it at all. When you can't have legitimate contracts with the city workers, how are you going to be with the taxi drivers? I don't know, maybe sometime they might go on strike, just, because city workers only have a right to do that. They don't have certain rights here, because I guess taxi drivers have more rights, like private industry does. I think this is very unfair to give favoritism to the private industry over public workers. I think they're all the same, they all pay taxes here. Obviously, you know, we just, we just had a vote here on contract here, what do you think is going to happen to taxi drivers who are not happy? They're not going to be happy, because the way you do your negotiations, you slam it down on them, and this is called job harassment. That's what it is. And I know that's what's going to happen eventually to taxi drivers, same thing, just like what's happening here. It's happened in private industry, and you're doing it here, and it can't go on and on and on. And I'm getting the ACLU, I'm going to do what I can to put pressure on ERC, and Bernie Parks, head of budget and financing, Mr. Bernie, I'm going to put pressure on you to stop meaning so hard on the contracts here for city workers. I mean, they're not your city family, Arnold, and neither are the taxi drivers. I'm sure that you all are in bed with all of them, except the city workers. They're not your city family anymore. You divorce yourself.
Thank you. Mr. Labons.
On behalf of Councilman Bill Rosedoll, I'd like to introduce Brentwood School here, Mrs. O'Handlon and their fine students, give them a big hand and welcome.
Brentwood School, the rear of the chambers.
To the San Diego City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Welcome, Brentwood, to LA City Council. Have a seat, relax, and enjoy. Donna Periman, our next public speaker.
Apparently, you care about the taxicab services. These look like good money for these services, a drop car, drop charge for two sixty-five for a ninth of a mile, distance charge thirty cents for thirty-seven seconds, get real, two seventy a mile, rate delay charge twenty-nine ninety, nineteen an hour. We complain about city employees, of course, DWP, health care, pensions, raise never gets taken up, but you make sure taxicab drivers can charge all sorts of different charges. I don't think these charges are less, it sure looks like a lot, and in the meantime, we need to help the city employees. You have to be thinking about the city employees, because that's supposedly the one that you're supposed to be taking care of, and you're supposedly the boss of the city employees. You need to be able to not just ask for sacrifices all over the place, you need to be able to be there for them, and the public thinks that you are, but you're not really, other than DWP. We need to all get a board and make it a fair way and not have threats. And apparently, you know, you're good for the taxicab services, coming with all these different charges, so they don't even have to wait a second at a curb or wait in traffic. I mean, I thought that was already taken care of. I mean, don't they already have the thing ticking forever, you know, all along the way? I don't see why they need to charge extra for, rather than their normal charge. We need to take care of the city employees first, and then you can come up with later on with silly charges, extra things for the taxicab drivers. To me, the taxicab drivers make enough, and I don't see we need, these are the people, our public out there who are taking it, aren't we concerned about them? You know? Pretty soon, we just won't be taking these taxcabs, because they're going to be too high, so I hope they all go out of business, I mean, if they're going to do this. So, let's be for the city employees.
Thank you very much. See no one on the queue? Item is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
And, Mr. President, that ordinance will be held over for one week.
All righty.
Our next item is item twenty-five, called special by Councilman Eric Zine.
Well, we will hear from our two public speakers, and then we'll turn to Mr. Garcetti, to Dr. Williams, number twenty-five, doctor. We have two cards on this matter.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serena, Northeast LA. Question, Inspector General, why do we need an inspector general? I thought we have a controller. Isn't this more appropriate for the controller to at least bid on? So maybe the RFP should include the controller's office. Inspector Generals were fine for MTA, but they haven't appointed one. It would be best for DWP, LAX, and maybe the Port of LA. But for revenue collection, it seems a little bit of an overkill when you have the controller's office available. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Doug Haran Salt from VICA.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine, fellow council members. VICA wishes to express its strong support for the implementation of the IG. We need to collect- We need to collect on the debts that are existing, so that we can move forward and create a better economic climate for our city, our county, and our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garciotti.
Thank you, and thank you for their comments and for the great support we've had, not only from an extraordinary commission, but also the public and labor unions and others who have advocated that we're just simply leaving too much money on the table here as a city. You know, I created the Commission on Revenue Efficiency because the status quo for me was unacceptable. Amidst the worst recession since the Great Depression, we were leaving money behind that we could do a better job collecting. Sometimes those numbers were much bigger than anything realistic, but any money that we leave on the table while we are furloughing people, while we've laid people off, while we've cut services, was simply unacceptable, and it had to stop. Every bill that we convert from past due to paid in full represents additional funding for this man, for this city more importantly, for police patrols, fire protection, for paving our streets, for library books, for after-school programs. And I wanna thank the commission members, I see Cheryl Parisi is here, who all spent time, a labor of love, really of an extraordinary port, that isn't just a report, it's actually an action plan. It isn't designed in any way to be shelved away with the other collection that we've seen from past audits and past reports. This finally shows how the implementation would occur. One piece of this was moving forward on the inspector general position, which is called for. At the end of the day, we have multiple people who have been somewhat accountable for collections, but we've not had one person responsible for implementing the collections policies recommended. I wanna be clear that today we are not looking at creating a new bureaucracy, quite the opposite, we're looking at how do we cut through bureaucracy and streamline and make efficient our collections. This is making sure that people can't point fingers in different directions about who's responsible for our lack of collections in certain areas. This is about getting the job done. This is about money already owed, and it's about accountability. To the CAO, if you would walk us through, we had talked about, and I think one of the items we had would have had an RFQ move forward, that's if we needed to go to the outside. It looks like we are going to be able to do this from inside the city family. So what is your recommendation here? We focused in on, we wanna make sure that the authority rests, though, I believe, in a place that has authority over all the departments, ideally in the CAO's office, with the backing of the council and the mayor. So any general manager and anybody else knows that he or she, this inspector general, been referred to kind of casually as a collection sheriff, but it's really an inspector general, would have that sort of backing and authority. Can you tell us how you think it would be best designed and work with your ability to see all of those departments and the good work you've been doing?
Well, our recommendation is so that we can move forward quickly, since it's been almost a year since this issue's been raised, that instead of doing an RFP to select a private contractor, that we identify someone within the city family, and even if it's on a temporary basis, assign them this particular task of putting this office together, putting the strategy for the first year, and working technically be part of the CAO's office, since our office reports both to the mayor and the council, and has oversight responsibilities throughout the city. But obviously, work very closely with the mayor and the city council, and in some ways receive, provide regular reports, ideally on a quarterly basis, to the council. Work closely with the mayor, so that the authority of the mayor's office is somewhat borrowed for this position, since they will be being asked to provide recommendations that would obviously impact the way departments are managed. And then within a period of about eight months from now, prior to the budget being adopted for the following fiscal year, that our office provide a report to the mayor and the council as to how successful it has been, and what needs to be changed to institutionalize this position within the larger city family. So instead of engaging in any further dialogue about, you know, should it be a contractor, should it be someone from the outside, you know, I think the goal here is to try to come up with, to start generate the savings as soon as possible, collect that revenue, identify solutions quickly, and then do a review in the next eight months and figure out how do we sort of manage and institutionalize within the city family.
Thank you, and I'll also just say that this is also about holding our general managers accountable, appreciate Mr. Zine's comments on that. And we said during this budget time, and Mr. Parks helped lead some of the discussion, that when general managers come forward, we really are gonna judge their performances too, on their ability to have implemented things. The core report is not just about future actions, in fact, it's already resulted in actions that have been really important in helping balance this year's budget. I remember when we used that one example that the chair of the commission pointed out to me as well, about how difficult it was just to get a dog license taken care of, and Animal Services really stepped up through our publicity of telling people that, first of all, you do need to license your dog, and I always like saying that again, because there are folks out there who don't know that, some of us didn't know that. We then are able to collect much more efficiently and to get more people in, because the Animal Services Department made that not a three, four-step, print something out, send it process, but really streamlined that based on a recommendation that had come out of the core report. So every single penny that we put back in is part of the road to recovery, and it also is about holding our general managers accountable. We praise those who have done a good job. For those that have not yet implemented what is there in the core report, this inspector general's gonna be breathing down your neck, so why don't you start initiating it on your own before they're there as well, and we'll all be in a better place. Thank you, and so I demand it to delete the portions that recommend going to an RF, is it an RFP?
Yes.
Or to RFP, instead empower the CAO to be able to do that in-house. We've already passed the funding for this, folks, this was something that was a high priority, I know for all of us, so this is just about the mechanism of how we'll get somebody in place.
And if I could just add that we would need a position in our office for this.
Yes, and I move, sorry, and move to allow the position in the CAO's office, and that's a one-year position right now.
As a resolution.
As a resolution authority. And that's important too, one last point, we said that, but I'll say it again, this is not to have a lifetime inspector general, ideally somebody comes in and changes the culture of collections here. This should be something that every city employee and every city manager thinks about and figures out how to maximize, because the people of LA are counting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garciotti. Mr. Coretts, followed by Ms. Perry.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've appreciated working with Councilmember Garciotti and the core commission, and we worked on this at the Budget Committee and the Audits Committee. And the fact is, there have been a lot of good ideas that have been proposed, long before we started this process, but have just disappeared into the ozone. This time, we've taken a more coherent approach with the core commission, and some things got implemented, and some things surprisingly have not gotten implemented or only got implemented halfway, and it's really because there isn't one person in charge of making these systems get implemented and making sure they happen. So this, I think this vote will be one of the most critical that we take in terms of impacting our budget for many years to come. And the fact is, whoever we pick, it has to be someone that's willing to be gutsy and willing to make a few enemies in City Hall, because they're gonna have to call people on their lack of action. And I hope we're aware of that, I hope we pick the right person for this, someone that's willing to take some risks, because they're not going to only make friends in City Hall to do this job right. But if they do this job right, this is going to save the city so many millions of dollars that their work in a relatively short period of time will have a huge impact. So I hope we pass this critical measure, and I look forward to seeing this happen and having it have a huge positive impact on the city.
Ms. Perry, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Mr. Santana, quick question. So this is not intended to be a permanent, forever type of arrangement, so what would be the first time that we get a report back, and how do we measure whether or not we've made progress? And that it's not duplicative?
Well, I think a couple of things. Number one, whether it's permanent or not should be decided after a year's time, after this position's been able to do its work, put a game plan together and start implementing it, and within a year, there could be a decision to extend that another year, to eliminate it, or to make it permanent. The success will be determined based on, number one, identifying the core recommendations and making sure that each one of them, as directed by your council, be fully implemented. So that's a clear, tangible, measurable sense of whether success. The second is really to establish, what is the realistic amount of revenue that can be collected, and establish specific goals for the various areas where the revenue is not being collected.
Because sometimes receivables are so old, they're deemed to be uncollectible, and even though, you know, people may talk about that in the media, in fact, they're dead and gone.
That is correct, and so, you know, there's a lot of noise about this issue. Really bring it to a realistic level, establish specific targets, and the goal frankly should be that a year from now, when we're contemplating the budget, that there's actually a line item in the budget that reflects the increase in revenue that's being identified and collected as a result of the work that this position does. And so if at the end of the day, there's no real outcome to or impact to our budget, then it's not necessarily successful. We wanted to make sure that there's-
And then we dissolve it, or get rid of it, or what?
Then, at that point, you know, there will issue an analysis, provide analysis and a recommendation as to whether or not it makes sense to maintain that position another year, whether the framework has been put in place, everyone understands their responsibility, and goals have been set. Now it's really an issue of monitoring, and it could be incorporated in the context of the rest of, how we do manage the rest of the city, or whether or not it hasn't been successful, we haven't been able to reach that goal, and frankly, we should just eliminate it.
Well, I think on its face, it's a very interesting idea, but I am concerned about the somewhat lack of structure, the framework that's not quite there yet in terms of what you measure it against, to determine success in various categories, the process, and where you determine something is uncollectible, and that be done in a public manner and done on the public record, so that people understand, and we can help everyone be more realistic about, you know, what is collectible and what is not collectible. I mean, I think I'm willing to give this a try, at least for this one-year period, but I'm not, I'm not happy about the way that it is being launched. I think it's a little bit raggedy, but I am pleased that it'll be in your office, under your leadership, or under, not under your leadership, because it's an IG, but it will be in your office, so it's an impartial, fact-based function, as opposed to any other kind of a function. So, but I think in a year, we need to see what we have, and actually, I'd like to see it in six months, if we could have an interim mid-year, and I think I'd like to make a motion on that. Okay, you got a second from Mr. Labonge? Thank you, Mr. Labonge. To have it come back in six months to see where we stand, to see where it's trending, okay?
And thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Labonge, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I just wanna thank the CAO's office, you're the, in essence, the city manager, but not. And then if you have people within the wing of your office, you're able to do good things. The city employees of Los Angeles, from the bottom to the top and all in between, if managed correctly, are an effective force of good. And I think this oversight, because I don't know with all the time, how many actual days are there? There's fifty-two weeks in a year, times five, minus what days are the national holidays and others, how many days you have to do your job, and how many days to overlook and oversee in the management? Because I think it's management is the key to success. Coaching great players. If players don't have, we could have great players, but they don't have great coaches, you're not gonna be able to be successful. This position, I see, and I'm glad it's a twelve-month position, or if it needs a little more as you ramp up, but with someone from the city management, that's a good thing. If they're accountable, that it would be important to see a result, and if there's a result, then it's a success. But I think what Ms. Perry said is so important about collectibles and non-collectibles. I know someone once mentioned there's thirty-five million dollars in taxes from parking lots. That may be coming just out of the air, it may not be a reel, because this is a different type of business in serving the people. If it rains a lot one year, it will be different than whether or not if it's sunny all the time, but that is the factor. I think that's why we have a big, bad pothole problem this year, because we had over eighteen inches plus of rain. So in your office, the tool is so key to that, how often, who does all the evaluations of all the general managers? Just refresh my memory.
The mayor does.
The mayor does, and is that done every year?
Yes, I might understand that.
Right, so that should be done, and are employees evaluated every year or every other year?
Employees should be evaluated every year.
Every year, so all this is just a reminder of what we have to do, because there's a lot of people, there's been so much change that we've all gone through the last several years, and now there's more change. And if this is a position that proves worth, let's go with it. If it's a position that could fade away, let's go with it when it fades away, after it really identifies what is happening and what is not. And so I just wanna give you that support as you go forward to make sure it works effectively and in a reality to what it is. And then also, people do have rights to appeal the taxation, the fines, or whatever the case is that governance gives them. We may say it's something, but in fact, it may be a court of law that may rule somewhere else. All that being, and again, I wanna repeat, I wanna be a fine city, but not a fine city. We're after every nickel, because I think we wanna just be able to make sure that the city could run properly and key and fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes.
As we move forward on the RFP, we have a scope of work that's gonna be performed, and in that scope, are we going to include how we look at our asset base, our real estate, or is it more in terms of operations and processes and mechanisms within departments that creates efficiencies?
Well, we revise our recommendation, we're no longer recommending doing an RFP, we're recommending trying to identify a top-level manager from within the city family, to be able to quickly oversee this responsibility for a short period of time, for about a year. But again, the focus of it is the uncollected revenue. We have a separate analysis that we debated during the context of the budget about our assets, and looking at how do we maximize our assets, how do we look at the space that we have, and ask, and really evaluate as to whether or not we're using that space for the most effective purpose. And I know you've shared concerns about the fact that we may have a prime piece of property in a community that's being underutilized for storage, that perhaps even creates a sense of blight in the area. The separate, that's not part of this agenda, but what you approved is for us to hire a consultant to develop a larger asset management strategy, and it's within that context that we would be looking at that issue.
In terms of enforcement, as you look, go through the mechanisms and we get to these efficiencies, enforcement, I think is key. And we look at the experience with business investment districts. We went into our neighborhoods, started formulating these districts, we discovered that there are a lot of shops and businesses that never paid the business license fees. And if it wasn't for the organizing of these commercial corridors, we would have never known that they never paid, never registered. And so there's a huge hole in the bucket of revenue that we never plugged up and continue to empty out. Do you see those types of issues being addressed?
The goal is not to have this person replace the work of the department, that responsibility first lies in the department. However, the intention here is to have this individual really look at the systemic barriers that are preventing the department to be effective or more effective in doing the kind of work that you just laid out. So in the example that you laid, just provided, the goal would be is to say, okay, what is it that's not working here? Is it, is it a resource problem? Is it, we simply don't, we haven't done the canvassing, and maybe we should establish a arm of a particular department to do canvassing of businesses, particular in areas where there may be a large informal economy? Is it that we never follow up, we send them a notice, and then it just sits there? So again, it's looking at what are the systemic issues that have resulted in ineffective collections, and then provide recommendations to the council, to the departments, and actually make sure that they get implemented. You know, oftentimes, the challenge is that your council may adopt a policy, and then nothing happens. And in this particular case, we're hoping that we actually have an individual whose responsibility is to identify some of the missed opportunities, provide a series of recommendations, have those be vetted and approved by your council and the mayor, and then from that, establish a mechanism to evaluate and ensure that they're being fully implemented.
Yeah, and one last thought, as we go into the urban fabric, if you will, and start assessing these different economies and influential factors, I think the issue of- issue of, of language and culture and how people do business is significant. Uh, there are pockets that, uh, that have engaged where there's one person who's a spokesperson for many, because they speak English, the others don't. And then you've got all these informal arrangements that deals with money transactions. And in fact, each individual can do their own, paying of a business license or just representing themselves, but because of this breakdown, you have, uh, levels of abuse. So do we see ourselves, you see that becoming more apparent, or is that probably more of a byproduct?
Well, again, if, if, if that's sort of cultural issues or, uh, or, you know, variety of other issues is one of the principal barriers to effective collections, then, then clearly my expectation would be that that be addressed. I mean, you, you could have the best policy in the world, and if it simply doesn't apply to a specific community because it's not relevant to the, the systems and structure of that community, then it doesn't really matter. So it has to be relevant and it has to be reflective of, of how things really operate. It can't be just a theoretical policy that, that doesn't speak to the real world.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Carton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, uh, thank you for bringing this to a conclusion. I think we've been at this for a while. I would just ask, Mr. Garcetti, could we add two friendly amendments to your motion? One that we asked, that moved that the core committee or commission be extended to September the 30th, uh, because they expire as of July. The other thing I'd ask, that the CAO work with the core commission and bring forth their revenue generating ideas for the council's revenue day for July 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Carton, followed by Mr. Gakkorian.
Yes, I, I think that, um, one of the important things about the report back, some of the report backs that we're going to have to see real soon is, we need to, um, make sure that this person is empowered to actually correctly state what the realities are of what is collectible and what's not. Um, people say all the time that government needs to be run more like a business, but with all due respect, people need to understand, and there is data out there as to different industries and how much money or what percentages of monies that they actually write off and say, it's not collectible. And we got to stop spending time and energy trying to collect something that we know we have a 99.9% chance we're not going to get. We need to focus on realistically what we can collect. One of the things that frustrates, I think, the public and certainly frustrates me as a policymaker, is when people talk about, oh, there's $390 million in uncollected debt and there's $540 million, and here's a number, $541 million in non-taxable receivables that are more than 120 days past due, with 42.5%, more than two years past due, et cetera, et cetera. But at the same time, it doesn't mean that the people, the city's ever going to see all of that money. And one of the things that we need to do is make sure that this person is empowered in a way that they don't, they don't have to start sounding like a politician, that they don't have to start naming that tune. I can name that tune in three bars or two bars or what have you. They have to be empowered to be able to come to this body and in front of the public and say, we have X amount of debt. My recommendation, based on the facts of reality, are that we're probably not going to see X amount of these dollars. And it's up to you policymakers to instruct the departments or whatever the mechanisms are in order for us to cut to the chase and move on. Because every single year that we go through our budget cycle, especially during these tough times, people point at money that's not real. And that's unfortunate, because it frustrates our workers, because when they've been furloughed or they're having to go to their membership and say, hey, let's, let's help this situation, and all of a sudden, some of the workers say, yeah, but I hear that those politicians aren't collecting $500 million. Gosh, how much money that would save the city? How many jobs would that save us? But if it's not realistic, we need to be honest with ourselves, and this person is going to be key to making sure that we have honesty in the dialogue. So one thing that I want to make sure that we have is we have somebody who's not going to act like a politician. There are plenty of us already, and someone who's not going to be talking to try to get headlines, but actually somebody who's going to bring us facts, who's going to bring us figures and going to show us what it is that's going on in the real world and what we can expect so we can make good policy decisions. And actually, when we have to, for God's sakes, write something off, whether it's we're writing off $1 million, or whether we're writing off $12 million, or if we're writing off $120 million. We need to be honest with ourselves and honest with the public, because it frustrates our workers, it frustrates the public, and it makes everybody look like we're really not trying, and that's just not the case. Thank you.
Mr. Gakkorian, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Carton's point, I think, is an important one, that certainly the amount of collectible revenue that is spoken about is, is grossly exaggerated right now. Uh, but, but the truth is that, um, we've gotten into the position of having that kind of grossly exaggerated collectible revenue in part because of failures in management and failures in policy that allowed that lost revenue to accrue to that point. And so I think it's important that, I'm going to support this, in part because I think it's important that we shock the status quo on revenue collection a little bit. Um, certainly we'll never be able to collect those large numbers that we're talking about now, but we should also never allow ourselves to get into the position of allowing those numbers to accrue to that extent. So I think this is an important step. That being said, I hope that this, I hope that we're going to be very clear in ensuring that this position is a temporary one and it is an advisory one. Because the truth is, we hire general managers to manage departments, and it is the general manager's responsibility to ensure that what's owed to the city is collected. It's the mayor's responsibility to oversee and hold those general managers accountable. It's this council's responsibility to make sure that we have policies in place that allow those departments to run more effectively. I'm concerned that we may move in the direction of contracting out those responsibilities and that accountability by, by creating new positions that essentially take on what is fundamentally our responsibility within the city infrastructure. And so it's great to have an independent position that will be advisory, that will devote full time, full resources to analyzing the status quo and making recommendations. But ultimately, it will be our responsibility, the general manager's responsibility, and the mayor's responsibility to ensure a more effective operation of this city and its services, and to ensure that we provide our services more cost-effectively to our constituents and collect on the revenues that are owed so that we can help to balance this budget. It must, must be clear that that responsibility always resides here and not in an inspector general's office.
Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Labonge, you want to go first? Go ahead. I'll, I'll close up when you're done. Okay?
Because I got this idea from everybody's comments here. Is there anyone in the CEO's office, because we're talking about collecting revenue from those with taxation, but how about who's responsible for making sure we get our fair share of grants from either the federal government, from the state government, or from foundations with this emerging, uh, public community process? I'm changing that term from public-private, because people don't like that concept, but public community. People in the community want to help the public. So this public-community-private partnership. Who's responsible to look at our scorecard on that? Is there anyone? And if not, and this is both to you, Mr. Santana, Mr. Garcetti, could you identify someone with an existing job? Because I remember, uh, God, I want to say, forgive me, but he never, he had the big, long hair, Parker Anderson. Parker Anderson was the CDD, was Mr. Grants for the city for many, many years. And that's all they did with grants. And I know we've, I know we may have gotten away with it, because other critical issues have taken place. Who's looking at the grants? Who's looking at the foundation dollars? Mr. Santana?
The, the primary responsibility falls to the various departments based on their specific issues. If you look at our, for example, uh, each department applied, uh, for the various competitive grants as it relates to our, our, the, the role of the CEO's office is to, uh, evaluate those, uh, grants, make sure they are consistent with , uh, city policy and, and, you know, a good time, time.
But are we compared to, uh, you know, the top major cities in the United States? Obviously, New York with the biggest population, Chicago, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, Houston. How are we percentage-wise for grants? If governing today did a magazine, did a expose on foundations and grants, where do we fall into it? And is that a whole separate issue? Or is that something the CEO's office should look at, Mr. Garcetti? This is where I'm asking, because I think Mr. Carton said it, those things are not going to be collected. But yet, are we, when you said that, Tony, I thought of this other issue of, are we collecting our quote, "fair share of grants"? You know, because I'm sure some cities hustle real big, and I know some political organizations would rather give to a smaller city than Los Angeles, because it's more, everybody in town knows they get $250,000 from that, where in Los Angeles, it's a big town and $250,000 is part of a bigger picture. So you got my idea?
Yes.
So, Mr. Garcetti, you got my idea. And I think everybody said, let's look at this. This is a good idea to look at for a year. Make it work. And then also, I think what Mr. Gakkorian said, in the end, you got to hold people accountable in the structure of management.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Garcetti to close.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Um, just, I just saw Ron Galpern out there. I don't know if you'd just come forward real quick, Ron. I want to thank you again for the great work that you've done. Absolutely, Mr. Parks, I think both of those are great amendments. Um, to Ms. Perry, yeah, we, I think the CEO will stop that every three months, not just every six, so let's make sure we have quarterly reports. To criticism that they're going to be writing reports, they're going to report to us, which is different than writing reports. We're not interested in any new reports being written. But, um, Mr. Galpern, if you want to just come forward, I want to reassure any members or any folks in the public who think that anything that was in here that we're moving forward with, that the design of this, um, you know, is, is not just secure, but it is coherent, that there's nothing raggedy about it, I think, which was one of the concerns Ms. Perry had. I know you specified, I mean, this is about as specific a blueprint as I've ever seen, 11 priority areas. The first one was inspector general. It was the very top one. Other things have been implemented. I want to be clear and keep repeating that. But the inspector general was specifically to prepare and provide independent reports on core implementation, um, to provide independent reports to us on department revenues and collection performance compliance so we can hold accountable. That is then our job with the mayor to hold accountable those that are not doing a good job. The convenor of the collaborations and coordinations to help across these different departments, technical consultative advice and oversight of collections reform, and a conduit to others who are doing that. And the specifics in terms of whether this is a good approach or a coherent one, I think you put one very clearly forward. To sell and auction age receivables, to speed up amnesty and settlements, to look at compulsory and automatic account transfers, our secondary collections, to put out an RFP or an RFQ for the valuations of our saleable receivables. Um, as I mentioned before, expedite an amnesty program, capture our EMS data and do better job on billing on that, recalling our severely delinquent ACS accounts. These are all very specific things in terms of an approach that is not only coherent to me, but I think is very business-oriented. So I'll give you the last word on that, and, and thank you again for your work. You have been kind of our collection sheriff to this point, and I want to thank you for that, because we wouldn't be here without you and the great work of your commission.
Thank you so very much, Council President. Uh, you actually said it so well. There's, uh, there's not much left to say, except several thank yous. Uh, of course, to you for really shepherding this and being a champion of this and of the creation of the Commission on Revenue Efficiency. Uh, and, and also to the other elected officials who were, were part of appointing the seven members of the Commission on Revenue Efficiency. I'm very proud of, of the work of this incredible group of people and, and, uh, I, I'm really privileged to work with them as well as, um, having worked with so many other great people in the city in putting together our blueprint for reform of city collections, including, of course, our CEO, uh, CAO, who's right to my, to my right here. Um, I, I think this is just an incredible opportunity to finally make some change. We've talked about this for years and years and years, and now we can actually do something about it. And, um, of course, as, as, uh, Councilmember Carton has said, and correctly so, a, a lot of the money that is officially on the books is not collectible, but it's about changing the process in the future. Uh, it is about also looking at what's really collectible and going after it, and what's not, let's get it off our books. Uh, so I just wanted to thank you very much for, and everybody here in the council for, uh, taking the time to take up this important issue and to make this tremendous change.
Mr. Carton.
I want to thank you for taking the lead on this, Councilmember Garcetti. But also, I want to remind everybody that, that Ron, you as the chairman, and the members of this committee have volunteered your time. And that's another example of being efficient. But however, uh, I think that we can all agree that this is not a volunteer position. There's only so much that we should expect of our public to give of themselves, like you did, Ron, and the rest of the, the committee members. But at the same time, now it's our job to go ahead and take it to the next step. Uh, I remember when I used to work with my father in construction, I used to, I used to be the one mixing the cement, so he could go ahead and, and, you know, lay, lay the foundations and stuff. So you've actually mixed the cement. If we just let it sit there, then it's just going to get hardened and we can't use it for what all this, these ideas, good ideas are meant for. It's meant for us to take it to the next step and then actually lay a foundation and then get the city to actually do what's right and get as much of what is collectible collected. That's where we're at today. So, uh, it, it was mentioned by some of my colleagues that we can't just let this go stale on us. We can't just let these good ideas just sit there. This is something that's long overdue, and I appreciate all the work, Ron, that you've done and your colleagues. But at the same time, now it's in our purview as policymakers to make sure that the CEO's office and that all of us don't let this go stale. It would be a shame for you to have mixed this together. I think it's as well as can be done. The ingredients are well set. Now it's all mixed up and ready to go. If we sit on it, then it's not going to create the foundation for the millions of dollars that should and will be collected if we follow this plan. So thank you very much for your volunteerism. Thank you very much, Councilmember Garcetti.
All right. Thank you. That matter is now be forced with amendments. Madam Clerk, on the amendments, will you have amendments on this matter?
Okay. Uh, we have to delete the RFP portion of the CEO's CLA report, to approve a resolution authority for a one-year position in the CEO's office, uh, the CEO to report back in six months on the status, uh, for the core commission to be extended to September 30th, and for the CEO to work with the core to bring forth the revenue generating ideas to council on its revenue day on July 30th.
Very well. Okay, colleagues, on that matter, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabrate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay, on items number three and eight, those matters are going to be continued. Do we have a date continuation on three and eight? One week? On item three and eight, one-week continuation. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Uh, council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer.
There are excuses at the desk. Councilmember Rosendale requests to arrive by 11:00 a.m. on June 15th for city business, and that meets council policy.
That's approved.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements? Mr. Parks, announcements?
Yes, I'd just like to advise the public that, uh, a African-American redistricting committee project will be meeting today, Tuesday, May 21st, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., at the Expo Center, 3980 Bill Robertson Lane, Los Angeles, preparing the community for their participation in the redistricting process.
Mr. Reyes, announcements?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just wanted to, to share with you, uh, my sense of gratitude to the police department and their hard work identifying that one individual. I know there's still a lot more work to do, but in speaking to the detectives and Chief Beck and Captain Murphy and everyone else involved, uh, they put a very strong effort, been very focused, I think for the sake of, of our sense of relief as a community, and a message to the world, frankly, that Los Angeles is a safe place, that we do our due diligence in achieving justice, and, um, that we continue praying for the soul family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labonge?
I just want to compliment Mr. Reyes and his hard work in this effort, along with, as he did mention, the LAPD in Northeast.
Thank you. So you know their announcements? Are there any motions?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I think we should rise for the people of this country and the areas of Joplin and other parts of the land with the horrific torn hills.
All right. Hold on a second, Mr. Labonge. So everyone, please rise for adjourned motions. Adjourned motions, Mr. Labonge.
Members, as often is the case, we're challenged by nature, whether it's an earthquake in Los Angeles or a firestorm. But the last several days in the central part of this country, in Missouri, in other parts, over 117 people and more have been killed as devastation. And headlines and the photographs and the, uh, the national newspapers, as well as our own local papers, show the utter devastation and how quickly it happens. From a storm that comes and then five minutes later, over 200 mile an hour winds. This council should stand to memory of those who lost their lives in this ongoing tragedy that has affected central belt of this country. that has affected the central belt of this country.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Claudette Veronica Thomas, who passed away February, was born February 1944, passed away May 13, 2011. She was born in Miami, Florida. She had a long-term nickname of Ronnie. Ronnie and her mother moved to Los Angeles when she was two years old with her father while he was on a tour of duty with the Army. She, and moving to Los Angeles was the first time in 1948. She attended Nightingale Junior High, graduated from Fremont High School. Decades later, she decided to continue her education and graduated from Harbor City College. In '62, she welcomed her first child, Tracy. Almost 10 years later, after she met, she was married to Theodore Ted Thomas Sr., and they entered matrimony in 1974, creating a new family with Ted's son, Teddy's Jr. They then had a second child, Rodney Aaron Thomas. Ronnie worked for 30 years with LA County, retired from the Accounting Department, Department of Public Works. Through the years, she was very active in many bowling leagues, and was also an avid card player. From 2006 to today, she served as a secretary to the Park Mesa Heights Community Council, along with her husband, as the community council president. On April 12, 2011, she was recognized by this city council with a resolution for hard work and community activism. After her breast cancer was diagnosed in 1998, she became active in the Revron Cancer Walk, with family members and coworkers supporting her. She raised over $5,000 in one year. In late 2009, she was diagnosed with lung cancer and entered the standard therapy. She passed away May 13, 2011. She survived by her husband Ted, her daughter Tracy, and Tracy's husband Eric, and a host of family members. Services are today, May 24 at 11:00 a.m. in Inglewood Marquee, located 1206 Sentella Avenue in Inglewood.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry?
Yes, I would like to join, Mr. Parks, and while I don't want to divulge the names, I want to note the passing of a 22-month-old child who was shot and killed last night at about 55th and Hooper. He was in his uncle's arms, and his uncle was alive, and was beheld by his uncle when bullets passed through the fence in the yard, several rounds, and hit the child, who's 22 months old, and his uncle, a young man in his 20s. And I just thought that we should note that, this is a baby.
Our condolences to the family. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This completes this meeting of the LA City Council. We'll return tomorrow, Wednesday. Have a good afternoon, Los Angeles.